Hi, everybody.
Hi, Al.
Happy birthday, Bill. I didn't call you on your birthday.
Oh, thank you. Well, it beats the alternative, right?
Yeah, it absolutely does. It absolutely does. So I won't, I won't ask you which anniversary of your 39th birthday this was either. I'll leave that alone.
Now I can vote. When was your birthday, Bill?
No, it was Saturday.
Oh, Saturday.
Yeah. And, yeah, it was just my nice little day. As far as, you know, like I said, birthdays still excite me just like they did when I was a kid. Well, we had a fun time. We had a fun time.
Well, Bill, I signed the document at the police station today. I don't know if they gave it back to you or not.
Well, I, yeah, I just got back from the conference in town. I just, we had the, what do you call it? The Mass Dot one.
Okay.
Name escapes me, but moving together. So I just got in. We're moving. I think Paul's coming today. I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't, I, he got, he gave me, he sent me an email and it was kind of like, got chopped off. So it was like, I got like P for Aces. I don't know what happened. I mean, I think it was on the road when he sent it maybe, but, but Paige, it's possible you may have to open the meeting, okay? I couldn't understand. Did you ever read that book Catch 22?
Gosh, years ago.
I remember when they censored the letters. They were having fun and they were, and they were censoring letters and they're like, no, absolutely no adverbs or pronouns in this letter. And they crossed them all out. That's what I kind of got.
That's funny.
Yeah, it was a joint for the first part, so we'll.
Bill Nemser.
Yes, I can. Can you hear us?
I will, I will be attending the Potomac Road meeting tomorrow evening for the, for the residence part, not for the business one, the first.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, David. I'll send it to Andrea who's taking care of that.
Yeah, she sent me, she sent me both links and I'm not going to sit there for two and a half, three hours, so.
No, I don't blame you. No, so I'll tell her you're on the residence one.
I'll be on the residence one, the second one. It starts.
Okay, I'll let her know.
All right. I'm going to open our meeting. My board is all physically present in the room, so we won't need to do a roll call, but I'll pause here and I'll let the ZBA open their meeting and take a roll call.
Thank you. So I don't see Paul on, so I guess that falls to me. I'm Paige, the P, the vice chair of the mayor of ZBA. So members, when I call your name, please respond. But before I do that, I'd like to officially open this joint meeting. Do we have Leslie on tonight? I don't see her.
She was in the room.
She was gonna come. Oh, she's there?
The camera's way up here, Leslie, so, yeah.
Oh, great. Thank you. Yeah, I can't see everyone. So Leslie is present. Jerry?
Yes.
I see you here. Brad?
Yes, present.
Present myself. I am present. And then are John, is John here or Peter? John, let's start with John.
John, I see John's name.
And Peter? Doesn't sound like it.
We have one. Let's see, Madam Chair, I'm not sure who. Oh, it may be it's from the select board. Okay, never mind. I see. It's, there's a logo.
Brian Corville is online if you were looking for John.
No, we've got John.
We have John.
Yeah, I don't see Peter.
Me neither.
No Peter, no Paul.
No Paul.
But we have a John.
We do have John, so.
And more importantly, we have a forum for each board.
Sarah and Andrew?
How about a Peter Paul in there?
Yeah, we're not in executive session.
So my, my, for taking executive session minutes, do I need to note who's here from the planning board also?
Yeah.
So many. Thank you.
Anyone who's in, in the session. So, so I believe now we'll entertain a motion and then we'll let the ZBA do the same. Is that correct? And then do we have a way to make sure anybody who joins late can get into the room? All right. Very good. So in that case, I will entertain a motion.
The move pointer, joint executive session with the zoning board of appeals to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the ownership division of the public property in the chair that still declares. 123 Summer Street, and separately, not in joint session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease of valuable real property. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation of the public property. 61 to 63 Summer Street.
I have a motion and a second. I will, since this is for executive session, Chris?
Yeah.
Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
And I myself am a yes, and we will reconvene in open session afterwards. Paige, would you like to enter into executive session with the zoning board of appeals?
Yes, I'd like to. I think we need to make our own motion. Is that correct?
I believe so, so.
So I would entertain a similar motion to enter into executive session with the select board.
Second.
I'd second, so we'll do a roll call vote with Leslie.
She said yes.
She said yes, thank you. Wasn't picked up. Jerry?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself, that's also yes.
So I'm going to open a breakout room for the BBA member, so you'll see it and then you can enter into the room.
Something's going to pass any noise levels. There are so many things going on that I can't. Like a foolish heel. Funny how Rob Don turned into the rotary guy. He said he wanted to put a four rotor engine in his car. And then he started getting involved in it. And he said he wanted to build his own four rotor engine, like from scratch. So he has all the pieces, like the end plates, rotors, all the stuff is in there, like all custom built by him. The engineer is holding it. It's like pretty amazing.
Wow.
Then he got a lot of notoriety because he put a rotary engine in a Corvette. He did it as a joke because everybody was taking the Corvette engines and putting them into rotaries and everything.
Right.
It's like, well, why don't we just put a rotary engine in a Corvette? So he did.
Just because we can.
Yeah, he's a very strange guy. I mean, I don't think I laughed with 15 minutes of him with a business. Like, oh, so hyper. Four rotor engine, very, very loud. Really good.
Good. Good, you like?
Four rotor, the biggest turbo I've ever seen.
Hello, thanks for visiting Chicago Cars Direct. This is a 2011 Cadillac CTS all-wheel drive wagon premium. It's white diamond clear coat or white diamond tri coat over cashmere with Coco access. Just the best looking wagon that has ever been produced, in my opinion. Better than the, actually really, really, I'd say, I'd say it's better. These videos for our clients and just kind of walk around the vehicle, so you can see the condition of it. But this is one of my favorite vehicles that looks really, really great in the sidecar for white.
My wagon of the week.
And we do these videos for our clients, just so they can see the condition of it. We do about 80 photos on our website. But sometimes you just have them a video so you can see everything. No damage or problems on the side. Just zoom in for you so you can see that. Looks great. We did see the paint meter as well. It's a professional paint meter. What it does is it measures the. Sorry for the light, the noise from the lights. It's a little loud. But they're bright. It's the Skyview roof, which is huge. It's regular patcher. Problems with that. And here's the hood. Let me show you the hood. And there's always a couple rock chips, but let me see if I can point any of them out to you.
It's been driven, it's been a rock chip, both down. You know, people get spun up over rockets. It's a rocket.
304 horsepower and 273 pounds per quart. It's the Baker V6 engine. It's, it's, it's a wonderful engine. High revving and smooth. It's made into a six-speed automatic transmission. The great thing about the Baker engine, I'm just going to pan across the engine and see the condition of the engine there. The great thing about this engine, it gets the same gas mileage as the smaller engine. So you get a lot better performance and no penalty at the gas pump, but it's, it gets about 27 miles per gallon an hour. Really great. Especially for an all-wheel drive.
Hello?
I mean, there's no, everything is exactly how it's supposed to be.
Really interesting, Derek.
And if it's, the roof seat backs are in place, it's actually 25.4, which is still a lot. And that's as much cargo space as what you'll find in a lot of smaller SUVs. It's just huge back there. The thing is, when you fold the roof seats down as well, they lay flat without having to do anything else. Holds down very, very easily. One more thing.
As presented. What's that again? All right.
I put the leaders to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic, which stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
All right. Oh, good job. All right. As a preliminary matter, this is select board chair Jeff Swanberg. And we are all in the room, so we will not need to do a roll call for members. Good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted both in person and via Zoom. Some speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely, and we will allow for the public to provide comment via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that if you are participating remotely, other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive materials, are available on board docs. And we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs, unless I note otherwise. Before we begin, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. Chair will go down the line of members inviting each to provide any common question or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, if you are participating via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. For all participants in person or remote, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yield for to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comments, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. Chair will ask members of public who wish to speak clearly state their name and address prior to making their comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes each. Thank you very much. And we will now turn to the first item on the agenda, which is public comment. We would like to hear public comments, and if there is any further action that is required by the board, the chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Please, I'm sorry, depending on the comment the board may, if we are able to within the confines of open meeting law respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. And so I will open the floor for public comments, starting with anyone in the room. Very good. And is there anybody online who would like to offer public comment this evening? Okay, there is no public comment, so we will move on to item number four, which is our consent agenda. Two items, I think the winter parking ban is pretty standard. There was just a comment on the DPW for item four A, the menorah lighting. And I believe Greg, we were going to plan to pay for DPW overtime out of the select words community events budget. Very good.
Which I recommend.
Yes.
I will move to approve the consent agenda item. A and
And B.
B, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions, comments? Or concerns?
I will also move, let me amend my motion to move to approve the use of community events to account to support the town's personnel support costs.
There.
Very good.
That was my only comment was that.
All right. Any further comments?
I have one other question. Is the parking ban, is it normally the summer first or?
Yes.
It is. Okay.
Yeah.
I was thinking it was another. Yay.
And we have a permit program to get permits are for sale in the office of municipal services for folks that are looking for an off-street place to park their vehicle.
Great.
Contact us.
Very good.
Thank you.
And that's new this year?
No, we've had it for several years.
Yeah, very good.
Unrelated, unrelated to the motion this evening, but just is somewhat related. In the past, we have also had waiver of parking. Is that coming up?
Yes. Yes, I do usually put it on the same one.
We'll do it another time. Okay, as long as it hasn't been forgot.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
You have a very good.
You said this before.
I know, I know.
All right. Any other comments? Then all in favor, and we can just do this. Fantastic.
Look how fast we can.
Yes, we can. Although I'm going to take a brief pause. Greg, would you mind introducing Greg real quick? I was so eager to jump right into the meeting, give him time. I know, but it's nice if he's going to be here the whole meeting.
Well, thank you.
Introduction.
This is Greg Wilson, the new executive system.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah, so yeah, this is Greg's second week. On his first day, he went to town meeting. So he's still here. And I know we're thrilled to have him, and he's getting his feet on earth, and you can see him sitting here tonight, and he'll be helping big help, obviously, to everyone. Yeah, we're just doing that.
Great, welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. I'm sure we'll have plenty of time to communicate. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
You're not on the spot or anything. Yeah.
No. No, thank you so much for having me. I'm really excited so far. So good. You know, I'm learning a lot, and I'm excited to learn more and jump right in.
All right, fantastic. Well, welcome, and I'm sure we'll have plenty of time to interact in the future. All right, moving on to item five, which is a appointment for an alternate to the conservation commission. Good evening. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Your patient.
We're, yes, your patient.
You're welcome. I stayed right on like, I was just right at the computer just waiting for.
Very good. Well, we thank you. We thank you for your patience. We've had a chance to read your application, so we always appreciate it when people take the time to fill it in with such detail. But would you like to just sum But would you like to just summarize and say a few words about why you're interested in the conservation commission?
Uh, yeah, so um, I have a background in natural resources conservation, which was my bachelor's degree. And my master's degree was environmental studies. Um, I was suggested an interview for a job position as a conservation agent. Unfortunately, I didn't get the job to join a conservation commission and learn about what goes on in a conservation commission. Uh, so I joined one and I've been, I but you know, Maynard, because I live here in Maynard, I grew up in Lexington. But um, I wanted to be a part of a conservation commission, learn what was going on around town and like help with any conservation issues. Since I have that background in in natural resources conservation. Yeah, did you want anything else? Uh, I'm ever interested in dangerous species conservation and wetlands protection and.
Very good. Um, no, I, is there any questions or comments from the board?
How long have you been in Maynard, Andrea?
Uh, so I moved here last September, I think. Um, I was, I grew up in Lexington, so I lived there for most of my life, but Maynard's a really nice town. It's a nice and I love being right near Big River.
That was what could be, that was really the point I was gonna make, because I last got, the last person that we interviewed for a position on the conservation commission, I asked the question about what are, what are some of your thoughts relative to protection of the river? And how you think we could utilize it and protect it at the same time?
Oh. Yeah, are you asking me?
Damn.
Oh, you are. I thought you said you were asking someone else, so I.
I asked that person that too. I'm asking.
Utilization, well, I love walking near uh, near water resources such as ponds or rivers or streams. Um, I love looking for wildlife such as great blue herons, such as painted turtles, et cetera. I just um, I'm a big wildlife fan. Um. So utilization of the river, I think we have the asset that Real Trill, which I um, goes partly, you know, near the round river. Which is great, because you know, that's what, one thing I would suggest was having a public um, what's the word called, you know, to accept a public accessibility to the river for people to walk. Um, I think like open space conservation, especially since it's very important for uh, to conserve a natural resources surrounding rivers for flood control, erosion, generalization of rivers can do a lot of damage to um, you know, communities down the line from the river. Um, so protection for flooding as well as protection for wildlife habitat um, is very important too, as we have, you know, well, not just a water of the river, but like wetlands and rental pools. We have a few species of concern such as landing turtles and blue spotted salamanders. They're very important to conserve, you know, make sure that they don't go extinct. Um, I know that there are um, like bald eagles and like osprey use um, you know, water resources for fishing for uh, for for food. So that's also an important consideration. As not just humans need water for freshwater drinking and for transportation, et cetera, but our our non-human counterparts also need water, you know, for drinking as well and for prey for um, food sources.
Great, thank you very much. Good luck.
Great.
Yeah, sorry, I know it was a long winded answer, but yeah.
And it shows you're a thoughtful person on the issues that that uh, this commission will be addressing. And we do have a recommendation from the conservation commission, so are there any other comments or questions?
I'll move to appoint Andrea Grossman as alternate member to conservation commission for a term to end June 30th, 2025. Authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. Uh, moving on to item six, which is a request for use of town property from art space. Uh, and this is specific to Naylor Court. And did you want to tee this off Megan or should we hand it right to Xana? Maybe there, so you hit the, hit the microphone in the owl. That's project towards the owl.
Um, yes, thank you. I came before you about a year and a half ago with a um film projection project, and that was for a mass development grant, improving our concept. We filmed that and we didn't get that grant. And this is sort of the fruition of it where we've come full circle now. So what happened was um the original grant was using the art cards to project. And of course those went their way separated, so um, we came up with this new concept of a seven foot cube wrapped in projection material. And we have an artist coming up from New York, who is a projection, visual projection um, installation artist, and she's got seven um, projector that she's gonna be projecting onto each side and on top of the cube. And she's doing, she's meeting with Mayor's Historical Society to get imagery from digital, original schematics. And her work is gonna be about the architecture of connectivity. So she's doing this um, experimental immersive projection of circuitry web and branches. And so it's, it's this idea that you're gonna be walking through the cube. And we made it so that you could create it being open on both sides or enclosed completely. But it has all this different functionality and she's the first artist that we have using it in this way.
Sensory.
Yeah, so we're, we're asking for the use of Naylor Court. Um, we, we were looking at a host of other spaces because of the light situation, so we'll see what we can deal with that, but right now we need to um, book that for Friday and Saturday night.
And do, do you know specifically where in Naylor Court we got in? So just that bank of parking spaces there, not the entirety of Naylor Court could be shut down.
So is it gonna be all of the parking along that? And I just pulled up real quick just to kind of take a look of it, like, so are you thinking that whole, basically that rectangle?
Yeah.
Uh, that red. All the way to the I don't have a red.
Way.
Know that we have the same.
The entire um, section there, you know, like there's that island.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Like halfway to that island.
Okay, all right, so.
It's seven foot and she needs, needs like ten feet from one side to the other, so.
Can we just make sure that especially LPL knows that this is going on if they don't already, so that because their customers can be impacted by parking, so they are just ready for it? Is there a way for us to get the word to them?
I can tell them.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody else over there, I mean, everybody, all those businesses downtown in some way get affected by a loss of a parking space. But, and now the movie theater is open.
I was gonna say fine arts will sometimes overflow that area, but there's.
Just to make sure that there's no surprises and that nobody says we were never told.
Yeah, we've been emailing Justin and I about um, the barriers, making sure that the black belt park there for this Friday for uh, seven to nine and Saturday.
Yeah, and so that's why it's important to let the businesses know, so they're not surprised when people say, hey, there's no car.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
I'll accept the motion then. All in favor? Very good. Thank you, Zana. Good luck.
Down check it out. It'll be a beautiful weekend. Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to item seven, which is a uh, technical assistance grant application. Uh, who will be speaking to this one?
Uh, perhaps Megan, but it's, it's an application of uh, so in itself, it's not a contract. It's, I don't know why this particular application requires the chief executive officer to sign. But because the board hadn't authorized me to do so ahead of time, I was just, you know, seeing that it off there for right now. But it's, it's relative to the complete and neighborhoods initiative, and actually I'm trying to get my guess. What's that gonna do first?
So um, I think we brought in council several months ago to the board to talk about the new legislation regarding MBTA communities and how every, every town has a city or town that is an MBTA community. Explain how we comply with these new regulations, and if we, if we don't uh, then we will be ineligible for several grant opportunities, including mask orders.
Right.
So this is a grant to um, they're, they're writing to have some technical assistance to see if any of our existing zoning districts would qualify. Um, this is new regulations, actually Bill, our planning director Bill Memzer was at a conference today talking to the head of some of the heads of the HCB and discussing, you know, put some of our zoning areas count for this, or do we have to create new zoning? And so this is just kind of a tech, outside technical assistance to review zoning to make sure that we are compliant with these MBTA efforts. Um, we don't want to be in a situation where this out or any of these big grant.
Didn't I sign this already?
You did, but I didn't know that at the time, so.
Okay, very good.
So now we can do everything on the up and up.
All right.
Now it's official.
Usually we grant.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a grant application. It's not, any questions or comments? I'll accept the motion.
Move to authorize a submission of the grant application for the mass housing partnerships in HP, complete neighborhoods initiative.
All in favor? All right, very good. Moving on to item eight, uh, we have a
That was withdrawn.
Oh, this is withdrawn, so we are moving on to item nine. And these are um, two contracts, the first of which is for the design of repairs slash improvements, I'm sorry, modifications slash improvements to the alumni bleachers. And this is going through the house doctor uh, contract that we set up over the summer, I believe we, we started that. Uh, Greg, can you give us an overview of what we're looking at here?
Yes, that's right. So we engaged with one of the two house doctors we have um, on file, so to speak. And this one in particular is called Leroy Core. And so we, we are working with them to see what they can do for us in regards to possible improvements and modifications to the existing home and backfield bleachers, both at home and the visitor. We were interested to see especially in response to the voting inspectors uh, determination that he wasn't going to certify those bleachers and then when the bleachers were shut down. What we would need to do to bring it up to the satisfaction of the voting inspector in particular, what engineering uh, improvements might be needed. Um, so this design group can do that for us, but at a cost. Additionally, we were interested in what would it take to get them to be ADA compliant? Was a comment that was brought up very special timing as well. And then, so this would be sort of expansion of that original scope. As you can see, it's listed by those proposals in board docs. To sit, to say what, what would it take to bring it up to ADA compliance? We think that that is gonna be a significant undertaking. So um, being that they're on you know, perceived as school property, however, the alumni field assembly responsibility of the town departments for maintenance. Normally, I would have probably preferred that the school committee weighed before the select word, however um, just the timing of the scheduling, the school committee thinks meets on Wednesday this week, so maybe in two more days. Or they need tomorrow.
Well, it's a Wednesday, it's tomorrow.
Yeah, very good. You're right. So they meet on Thursday. Therefore, you're just first up. And so um, the way that the motion was drafted, as I drafted it, was that if the board would like to authorize me to boot those contracts, it would be considered upon endorsement by the school committee. Like I, I, my suspicion is that this like board doesn't want to prove anything, especially um, certainly like the potential for improvements to school. Um, they're not school facilities, they're kind of combined facilities, but it, but it supports a school program, which is a athletic program. And I, I figured this like board will want to sort of defer to the school committee in their affairs. Um, but again, this only gives us designs, so it just, it just gives us more options that we don't necessarily have to pursue. So it could say, um, this is what you can do, and this might be the schedule, and this might be the possible cost if you want to do A, B, or C to the features, which may or may not include ADA compliance. Doesn't mean we have to do those, but it, but the cost of eighty-three thousand dollars, five hundred eighty-three, five seventy dollars, um, it could just give us all those designs, which then we would have to procure if we want to pursue one of those options. So it's not nothing, it's this, this, what it could also do is, is show us that it is a significant undertaking costly otherwise um, to do what any of those modifications and maybe this like order school committee doesn't want to pursue those options. And then we look for another and, and another way to sort of satisfy that program, which might be purchase or acquisition of the, these mobile bleachers that there's currently out there. Our, our estimation, there's, there, there are about ninety thousand a pop, so if we get one of those with the existing hundred seventy-four thousand dollars left maybe that could be, you know, satisfactory uh, till we figure out, but we're actually going for a longer term features, which might be new features. Lots of options on the table, but this, this is a means to whatever those.
Search more detail understanding of those options, just in here.
So I, I honestly, and again, forgive my misunderstanding, but I thought that Leroy was going to come back to us with those options now, like that's what they were doing when they were out looking.
No, they were only assessing our current, what we currently have to tell us.
But, but they didn't tell us any, so again, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I briefly looked over their proposals, but they didn't tell us anything.
No, they're not doing any, having paid them yet. They're not doing any work yet.
So what?
Sorry, I know this is complicated. So we have designed, I know this is a lot, we, we have designers. We don't pay those design firms until we engage, we like, we have a contract for them to actually do whatever work we want to do. Current law says that you, you choose a design firm based on reputation, not by bid, not by price. So, so Leroy said they've been their reputable firm and, and facilities is, is what they design. And they said, we'll do these designs for you, and it's gonna, according to those things that you want to see ADA compliance um, consideration of, you know, like for longer term improvements to both home and visitor side, it's gonna cost you eighty-two thousand dollars.
And with that possible eighty-three thousand dollars, we don't even know if A, we're gonna be able to do it.
Right.
Or B whether.
No, that's right.
So because the other, because my other thing is why, why are we trying to do, or how long the repairs would last?
True.
Um. Because my whole thing is, well, why are we doing both? You know, why are we looking at, at both the home and the way? I realize that it's very hard to change old habits and we're used to having visitors on one side and home on the other. But um, to me, it would make more sense, especially if this was going to be a temporary thing, but even if it's a few years down the line that we do just the home side or, or something like that, where you're not putting all that money into you know, because I, I really hate to waste the money, and I know it's not wasting money, but it feels like it's almost frittering away the money that we have.
And my feeling on the home and away issue is uh, that I think it's a mistake to keep the home, the home side, the same side. Because I don't think it goes deep enough for be, and I'm not an engineer, so that these guys can tell us, but I don't know if it's on the table for them to based on the way I'm reading these proposals, home and way, whatever. Maybe the real answer is to move the bleachers to the other side of the field than what they're currently at traditionally. And build new over there and have both sides on the same side like they do over in uh, at Nishoba. And then you don't have the issue of how deep those go, because you have more room and depth behind the current visitor side, et cetera, et cetera. I assume they'll be looking at that. I tend to agree with Justine that um, that uh a long, a short, a semi-long-term answer could be there that we might be missing. I think that's sort of my thought. Uh, maybe a five-year plan, but I don't know if they're, if that's in the cards.
My understanding from Justine was more that, you know, we have a home proposal and a way proposal and ADA options, and she's saying if it's a temporary and temporary, maybe a two to 10-year solution. Do we need to even evaluate the way? Can we get away with the home solution? Am I capturing your feedback correctly, Justine?
Correct, or the, and the only reason I say the home versus the away, because I don't know as far as which one is better positioned to be the permanent solution, whether when we, when at some point we invest in actual new, brand-new bleachers. It may be that it's better to be, that space along the road might be the home space. It may be that it's better to be that space along the road might be the home space. But in the meantime, I just think that it's a bet, but there's more bleachers on the home side currently. So it seats more people, so it wouldn't make sense to only fix the fitters. I'm just very concerned, I. I'm concerned with the cost of the design. When we have no idea what they're gonna come back with.
It's true, but what we know is is according to what they, their scope of their proposals is they'll give us. Um, everything to be able to have good to go out to bid, to do contracted work, to 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 make improvements. To allow for a certain amount of. I long term is subjective, but like a certain amount of period of time where we'll have, we'll be able to use those features and and satisfy the certain. Here, satisfy the requirements for certification by the building inspector. We kind ourselves.
If they can support the law.
That's right, and so.
They can't, and I I guess that's my my concern, is what happens if we go through all this, we spend eighty-three thousand dollars and. What comes back is you can't renovate it that way.
And we found, so that's a good point, I and I know that was, you you conveyed that concern earlier, which is one of the reasons why. Having this sort of like a level of uh professional analysis is important to give that confidence, are we doing this the right thing? Um, because I know that's been a a sort of like public comment as well, it's like, why are we paying someone else to do what we just fix ourselves? Well, because we want to make sure it's done right and it has satisfied the buildings for for engineering criteria. So that that's why we go to this, there there could, there could be options if the board and. To say, to say, you know, like, well, let's not do the wayside, so that's twenty thousand dollars off that price attention. So we could do like that, or you or the board directs, none of this happened, and we pursue another option, so maybe we invest. Uh, of that hundred seventy-four thousand dollars of four period time being into those mobile bleachers. We're right now, like as I said, one option is to just purchase one of them for their three hundred, three hundred seats. Um, and then we, they're mobiles, so you can move them. But I that's, this this is exactly the source of my conversation on the spectrum of the board, what what do you perceive, what would you like? Or would you like to defer, maybe maybe wait to see the school committee, how they would vote on this?
We have any idea what they want to do?
I don't, so um, I've had concert conversations, just see like the spreadsheet I made, that was in a meeting with Brian Haas. My guardian, just so, um, and then so this is just where we laid it out, like this is what we thought might be. You know, with the consideration of the two bodies. Um, if you do wait and then and to see what the school committee wants to do, I could bring this, I could bring this back to you at your next regular meeting on fifteenth. That does reduce the amount of time, of course, that Leroy would have to do the designs, they were they were estimating that, like their proposal was to have this done by New Years. So.
Is there, is there any disadvantage to that? If it's not done by New Years, I mean, we're not doing work it.
Oh, they might, they might change their their proposal, because they they did it based on a certain amount of time and probably. Um, so they said this is what we'll charge, it, you know, with the expectations done by New Year, so I'd have to go back and check.
Sounds like the potential to reduce by twenty K is better than the. Amount that would probably add to the proposal if you were to delay, so that to me indicates, wait, do we get full committee feedback? I'm hoping the rest of the boards input on that.
I'm, I'm hesitant with. I'm hesitant to move forward without school committee. By them. So, and I understand that we in theory could move it, move forward and say contingent on them, but then we have then said it.
Right.
I I I really want it, I I want to know what they want to do.
So.
Because pass by.
Yeah, so we'll we'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting uh, with the benefit of the school committee will have met and deliberated on the issue and we'll. We'll have access to that, so is there any, I I think we're settled, agreed on that aspect, are there any other comments on? This proposal right now?
So the school committee will give us their recommendation ahead of, that's that's my expectation is, we'll get a recommendation from the school committee. Prior to our.
I mean, they have a meeting on Thursday, so we can certainly um, send a message saying we're expecting a recommendation or at least. You know, thoughts behind, you know, what which direction they want to go with these bleachers. And then the other aspect is the. You know, that those temporary bleachers, right, that's not what we had been assuming, right, so if we were to move with that plan, how long would that solution be in place?
Um, so much, I'm very bleachers are are probably, if they're not already gone, they will be gone soon.
No, no, I'm sorry, the ninety K popcorn, the.
Yeah, the mobile, I I call those the mobile.
Mobile bleachers.
Uh, so those same, I think.
Those short ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they're being used.
No, no, the ones, the the ones that we're renting right now, David, the one.
Call it one.
Yeah, so we could buy those, that's what, that's what Brad is saying.
We'd have to kind of make that choice soon, because um, so that we could, I I mean, even then, I don't know how long it takes to get these things fabricated and shipped out to where they come from. Um, but if we want to have it ready by the spring, I I don't know when the spring season starts, but.
And how long of a solution is that? Clearly, they're not as good as the full bleachers, so is that a tolerable solution for the next number of years, and I I would, I would have to of the school committee specifically. Um, because if we can not do some repairs and get by with something like that for a number of years. It's not as good of a product, but it saves money while we work on a long-term permanent solution.
Yeah, one of their concerns, I'm sure, and I've expressed this, uh, we have to get them to start thinking about. How they want to conduct their graduation ceremony, because if they're, if they're going to have a smaller set, they should start planning and get the word out, so it's not a shock. Come May, we have to have an indoor graduation, they should probably start. Or out to at some other, some other.
Well, that's that's an interaction with the question I just brought up, so we just want to make sure the pool committee is um, prepared to talk about those.
Those are, we, and those are like towns, that's you can see some, we talk, capacity, expectations. Um, do people stand or do they actually sit, like, what's it?
Plenty of colleges have graduations on black ground, so um. I'm sure many could get by the graduation on black ground if they get them on the football.
Um, I, and kind of related, but it's in the, it's in um. Is the NOIs, the notice of intent, do you have any idea, because I have lost track. Where we are as far as that goes, I know that that's the schools, where the school is going to put it forward.
In 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 partnership, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So that, so that for the NOI, there was two NOIs, one was for uh, and and that's what the community is for, folks at home, there's none. Uh, just that's, it's cool, so um, oh, alright, good. So um, community preservation committees process had accepted uh, those intent for any. Which could be involved into applications, they, there was two, one um, for uh, improvements and modifications to the existing features. And the second one for replacement of the features, um, the CBCMA determination that they felt that the first one, the group's modifications. Was not eligible for CDs, right, and then, uh, but they they were willing to entertain um, an application, so again. Conversion and evolution of that. For replacement, and so uh, that topic was also brought up by that team I described, with the superintendent's office and um. Yeah, applications are due next week, but I, we keep, no, thanks, man. Yeah, so we can um, like I, a lot of it's crafted, and at this time, the CBC understands what we're trying to get at. But I, right now, like the the estimated um, cost could be two million dollars, I don't think the CBC has that. But we'll, I'm I'm curious to see what they're willing to do.
And there's no way to get some kind of a better back of the envelope kind of estimate, other than just kind of, you just kind of pull two million dollars out of.
No, we could, I mean, like, you could see what other towns got, and then and then see, see what they cost for theirs, right?
I'm just trying to set it up for success, and I don't know what, apparently that's my phrase tonight, I think I used it twice at the, at the billing committee meeting as well. Um, I I I really want to hopefully see that through, and I just don't know what kind of support the schools need as far as. Um, you know, I and I I don't know this process, do they need, do they need letters of support, do they need? You know, that type of thing, uh, you know, should they be, should they be engaging with friends of major football or the friends of major soccer or? Um, you know, different recreation commission, things like that to to kind of, I mean, I know that one of it, that their members are liaisons, but. You know, to really kind of show that there is a, you know, there is support for this project. So I was just kind of curious, I don't know what that process is for, sadly, I don't know what the process is for major for that, so I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, a a lot of those will probably are beneficial. You know, CBC obviously wants to make sure it's investment into, you know, a actual. Community interests, like, like, consider a certain, uh, internal investment, so I I suspect all those letters, good. I will, I'll reach out to um, Brian Haas superintendent, perhaps my guardian, to have a record. And then um, uh, so that, you know, I can be whatever they need, like, I make sure that it's a, it's a good foot forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on the bleachers uh, or? Uh, inquiries for the school committee as they are prepared to celebrate on Thursday night? Okay, so no motion on that particular item. We will move on to nine B, which is the Coolidge School, but it does look this time, it is an extension similar to previously, but it looks like we have some firmer. Uh, understanding of uh, movement from the Massachusetts Board Commission. Somewhat, I'm trying to be optimistic here, Greg.
No, I, I mean, this is, you're you're right, Mr. Chair. This is the same motion with different dates, so um, but but you, I'm, I'm also optimistic, as I generally am. And so I just hopefully, I'm not gonna say, but if the board would be willing to take this, I still think it's a good. Move, I still recommend this, this extension, I'm optimistic that getting to the finish.
I thought we had gone to December thirty-first as it was already, I thought that that will be have gone, but.
We've said other things recently.
And and this one, I think we had suggested uh, a larger extension, just to give them flexibility, but they kind of like having the shorter extension to put the pressure on them. Massachusetts District Commission, which is why we we keep doing this.
Yeah, might be why we had the December thirty-first discussion at one point and they.
And then we said, no, I think that, yeah, I think that's what happened.
You know, but a drop dead date for this to happen, obviously, we we keep offering.
Apparently not.
And we can offer many extensions, but I mean, it, you know.
They they want, they want, the good news is they're continuing to pursue it, they want.
But I, which I, which I understand, but at some point, I mean, do we just?
I, so we're the ones.
That we're holding, and we're holding.
Which I, which I understand, yeah, it's it's kind of a, I mean, it's, this is.
Well, I don't think so, I think.
Great annuals.
I think this extension is what is that, is that sort of like uh, that line in the sand, and we keep moving that line.
So, although, we don't have to, and and then in which case, the board would have to determine what you want to do with the property, do you want to do another disposition here?
Yeah, I'm not of the opinion going back to square one, when we're this close to.
I mean, it's frustrating, but I think that we, I, so I think that we've talked about it before, that there were some lessons learned with this. I think we put some things in the RFP that that's what's holding this up is what we put in the RFP, so. Looking forward, that might be something we look at a little.
Been thinking about that recently.
Yes.
Any other questions?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the extension of the deadline to December twenty-third, twenty twenty-two for the closing in Deep Inviance of twelve Land Presspeed. To Consignee Real Estate Holding LLC, doing business at Civic Code Development. With the condition that the closing occurs within fifteen days of the Massachusetts Local Commission's approval of the current preservation restriction. And authorize the town administrator to execute the extension on our behalf.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, very good. Moving on to item ten, which is review of special town meeting, uh, we have a survey. This time, the, and I believe these are the updated results which are attached to board docs, so that's the final um, survey results. Uh, as of whenever that was closed relatively recently ago, uh, and there was a closeout meeting, which uh, Megan was able to attend on on behalf. Uh, of our side and uh, hopefully you've all had a chance to walk through it. Uh, Megan, would you like to give any updates from that closeout meeting uh, about suggestions that were brought up?
Sure, um, yeah, the takeaways were, we do to improve public outreach, there are a few. Uh, suggestions here and um. You know, trying to post around town more often, trying to um, send notes out. So folks can know when to expect the warrant in the mail and and how it will be uh, received, you know, in this case, actually unlimited. So that was one piece that we we discussed, that was prominent, survey results. There was also a discussion about um, you know, some of the interest in having. Remote voting and participation from home and and you know, unfortunately, that is not allowed um, at this time. And so our moderator, Dick Downey, said that, you know, the moderators association is is looking into that for open town meetings. It is allowed in capacities for represented town meeting. And um, so, and you know, unfortunately, that's that's not possible this time.
And that, I just want to clarify, so that's not, that's not possible in the state at this time, it's not, yeah, you're right.
Um, there are also a couple notes about the audio, which is um. You know, it's been a few years since we did it in this format, so we we took notes about how to test, put some extra speakers in the back. Um, task for it better to make sure that that entire room uh, has the same capabilities and sure everyone can hear what's going on. So, you know, there there were, you know, a number of takeaways, I think we had a lot of good uh, comments, and we want to keep improving.
Um, one observation is that um, well, I respect the survey. Uh, forty forty percent of the people who responded to the survey didn't even attend town meeting.
That's true.
But what I'd like to see is the reaction of those that did attend, the the sixty percent that were there. And the comments that they made versus the comments from the forty percent that didn't attend. That were likely responding to an online post of the fact, hey, you can respond about town meeting by linking to this. And we get responses that way, um, I respect everyone's opinion on it, but I'd like to see thoughts from the people who were actually there. Out, I you know, sort of pulled out, um, so we can read those.
Yeah, oh yeah, I think. And and I, you know, you can kind of manipulate data in in all sorts of ways, um, but I I completely see your point and I will. Um, I will, will adjust those responses to to look at those for.
Says thirty thirty-seven percent, uh, town meeting didn't meet people's uh, expectations, but is that thirty-seven percent?
Right.
Of forty percent, or is that thirty-seven percent of sixty?
Yeah, I I think that is probably skewed, the reason I kept everyone in for this initial um, review is because. I thought, you know, how people hear about it and still was still valuable, um, but yeah, some of those questions still don't make sense. So, and it's limited, it's, you know, serving monkey, free bird, so, uh, but I can't, I think it would, I think that makes a lot of sense. I'll pull out the respondents for um, just those who attended, take a closer look at that data set.
Right, thank you.
Any other comments? So, a few things, uh, I discussed with Greg about the public outreach, specifically, I think. You know, as you can see from question five, we hit it across a broad spot, but uh, one thing I think we could do next time is. Um, not for all of them, not the mailing certainly, but for the other items, do it twice, right, and and separate it out. And so kind of an early warning and another warning coming on, especially things like the Facebook and the newsletter, and just make sure it gets on people's calendar. Further advanced, so.
Put it where, how?
So we already put it out through, like, say, Facebook in the newsletter, so do it twice, do one even earlier than we're doing now and one closer to town meeting. So just double down, because we don't have more options of places that we can spread the word, so we have to make increased use of the ones we do.
What the, Greg, what the um. What's, what's the difference in cost, cost between Action Unlimited and just sending on every hotel, a warrant?
Which we did before we switched.
Yeah, and without a town newspaper readily available, publicly available.
I don't, how do we, how do we, how do we not, how do we not do something more than reach them? You know, from us fifty-one percent, like, it's not enough. I don't know, so so um, a warrant being distributed to every household is a town charter requirement. And uh, and as you can see, like, a lot of people said that that is, that's how they found out the first of this. I mean, the the Action Unlimited is a reputable company, so when when I was asking around just for general costs, um. A lot of people have the same processes, they go to a printer and then they distribute it and they have a, uh, enter the name of the license that they have through the US Postal Service. That allows them to go to their house, so the cost that I pay covers the printing costs and the distribution. So every, we'd have to do that no matter what, uh, but I I, the Action Unlimited is is is. I view it as a lot of convenience, I mean, like, people are, hopefully, I've heard a lot of like. You know, people like the Action Limited, you know, like, and there was a certain amount of like. You know, people like the actual limited, you know, like and there was a certain amount of like um disappointment when they reduce the routes, which by the way, I paid for those. This went to every house. But. Council on Aging is disappointed in particular because if they're not hitting all those routes, it's not essentially going to all their constituency like everyone over age. So um. That's disappointing. So either way, I have to if if not, if not actually unlimited, I'd I'd be paying probably equitable costs like to a degree just because it's just.
Can we tie some kind of a notice in with our um utility billing and all? Is there any? Does it? Does it match any up with any of that?
Maybe third quarter, but it might it might, which I think kind of speaks to just like multiple waves.
Right, just kind of like just FYI, this is coming up and then, you know.
Uh there might be on on a utility bill. Or a tax bill, there might be restrictions as to what you could put in. I think we had to apply special to have. Remember the um the school sends out or the um. Scholarship fund sends out stuff and I think there's a special requirement in order to get that added to the bill for some reason.
Well, maybe that's because it was adding asking for more additional money.
Could be. I just don't remember the specifics as to why, but I remember there was a discussion that we had to get special permission to do that.
Yeah, I I know other towns do that.
That's a good. That's a good suggestion is to put especially we know the annual town meeting date.
Right, like we know that now.
Know that now.
We can anticipate it now.
I think a banner of some type um that. That is it's something that just shows up is what it is what people suddenly take notice of. Um I don't know if we can do it downtown because of the height issue with trucks. Um but a banner perhaps um if we get permission from the uh the mill from the corner there near um. Bruber Brothers Building and a banner at the high school at the intersection. Ask um the folks at um. At Manor Crossing, if perhaps we can put up a sign there. That says something, you know, in the circle.
And you know, and maybe we we had, you know, unfortunately, the electronic sign was down. Maybe lesson learned is maybe we can ask if we can borrow another town's. So like now clearly it's something that people missed. Maybe that's something you guys can other town if you can borrow the sign for a week, you know, ahead of time.
Your suggestion I wanted to bring up was um. Connected to some of these advertisements, uh make sure people are aware that babysitting services will be available. Because I think we saw that in the comment where they might have known from, you know, one of these sources, town meeting was happening, but still stayed home because they didn't realize that there was going to be. Uh babysitting services there. So um increasing that on the town website, Facebook page. Et cetera.
I think and I think that one is something that we have a hard time. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I feel like we couldn't promote that too far in advance because we don't know. For sure that it's going to happen.
So why if we can that was National Honor Society does. Earlier with them and if we can get a commitment from them earlier, that might allow us to do that. But that's a good point.
That's certainly true for special town meetings because we don't we that date fluctuates annually. They they might be easily.
Um yeah, yeah.
That's true.
Okay. The last note is, I think we ourselves looked a bit different in the presentation, or some of us read directly what the text was in script and some of us. Um you know, Phil Coleman and then David, you know, ad libbed a little bit. I'm not saying either one is right or wrong, but uh. Before the next town meeting, we may want to. Uh during planning, confirm if we want everything scripted and read off or we want to um have it be a bit more informal. So just uh I think that will help for overall consistency about how we're presenting the. Uh information and some of that off script stuff can allow us to more authentically connect with the audience, which is something that. We would like to do, but there's risks to going off script in a town meeting. So it's it's um yeah. Uh so I think we we don't want to push any major, you know, kind of differences, but just kind of add like contextual details. Uh but just a note from the results. Any other comments on? Follow up from special town meeting? For the debut. Okay, thank you. And thank you, Megan, for making that. Uh item eleven, uh we have a select board vacancy and per the charter, there are several scenarios. So the options here are we could as a board, uh because we are far out enough from the next election. Um decide to hold an election to fill the vacancy. It would be for one plus years until. Uh Armin, the seat he held his natural timing.
Oh, it wouldn't go. It wouldn't.
Oh, wouldn't we have an election in May just to fulfill one year's worth of?
Well, yeah, so wait a minute. If we held a special election now, are you saying that seat would go up again in May? It's only for a few months?
Yeah.
Oh, I I was unaware of that.
Right?
I I.
Because I think that happened with school.
Yeah, it's it it's happened a number of times. You you have an old special election, the person holds the seat, but they have to. Apply for to run in the next annual election because you have to call an elect. You have to put the seat up for election that next May. So the person would be if they ran for a seat right now, it would be for the rest of this fiscal year. And then they would run again in May for one or one year. Correct. That's my that's my right collection.
Let's get clarification on that. Um and if we could look at. Uh right now we can pull it up. Uh but the other option is to wait, in which case with the next. Town election in the spring, then that would be filled for again, the one year term along with the two, three year terms that are up. And then the other. Possibility is if we do nothing, which would naturally result in the election during the spring. Uh hundred voters could um sign a petition to force an election. Uh sooner and then it would go back to scenario one as if we approved it.
Correct. And I do think we should make it clear to folks as as to the costs associated with holding. A special town meeting, which I think is twelve thousand five hundred dollars was the minimum cost. Uh and when there are issues of people being upset over spending, you know, five thousand dollars on certain things. It's twelve thousand five hundred dollars on an election that lasts for somebody to have a seat. Six months probably isn't worth that.
I am not clear from the charter that that scenario is there. It says fill of vacancy, which.
It says if there's a special failure to electric, it occurs. Until next. Or more until the next kind of election. There the stream remains selectmen may call to fill the vacancy.
Why would that not be until the following until that until that?
Until that next, because the thing is, if if there are three months. Remain until so say, say there was a vacancy in. April. Then you would have it. You would have an election for that additional year. Right?
Yes. So if we have a election right now, I I don't know why this would say it would be two months or three or six months until the um next spot versus. A year and six months until the term cycle. I would assume this fills the vacancy throughout the rest of the term cycle.
So that's not how it works for this school committee.
Okay.
I know that for a fact.
True, and that although filling the vacancy isn't the same for how it works for the school committee either.
They they're different because they appoint them.
Choosing.
Yeah, and and.
Until the next town election.
This is part of the church. We did a a ruling from the town clerk on this between.
Uh. We can look back historic with um. Don Capello. There were some previous resignations.
Um I I did not have to run twice.
Yeah, but how many years? How many years was on that seat?
Okay, uh so I I maybe I'm wrong.
Regardless, we're gonna want the clarity.
Or what did we do? What did we do with um? What did we do recently when um? She went to she went to Seattle.
Oh, uh yeah.
Uh oh. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember that now.
Oh, well, she that was a resignation.
She she uh in in because she moved.
Yeah. And I don't remember.
No, Armin was elected with me. Maybe she just didn't. I don't think she moved that close that far away from.
Now she she left. She did the fill.
Alright, so section section seven ninety, whenever a vacancy shall occur in the membership of an appointed, never mind. Alright. This this is what charter review committee measures. We'll we'll take the pause and we'll do it. Um. But it does say any unexpired term on that one. So that does seem to be the default. Uh we'll have to take. Alright, um yeah, let's get a let's get a qualification from the town clerk. Go ahead, Justin.
I'm sorry. So my so my question would be again, so if if for some reason it comes back that. It would be for the remainder of the term. If we elect not to move forward with a special election. Does that mean that that seat remains vacant for that entire fourteen month eighteen months? Or do you do one year at? We do the one year in May.
Yeah, do the one in in May, we would have two, three year and one, one year seat up and there would be separate elections. So I believe they would have to apply either for the. Three year or the one year.
That is true.
Right.
Yeah.
But I believe that that's what we did uh. When I don't think we've had any special elections. For an unexp- for somebody who left, I think what we did is we held an election. And build the seat at the next annual election. I don't recall that we had any uh special elections.
Right.
For a uh a resignation or a departure or a, you know. I don't think so.
My preference is to wait until. The annual town election, mostly based on the the costs and then mostly of the cost of staff time that would be required. To hold a special election that gains us a few months of being a full board.
Correct.
For a year of being.
And the the turnout to such a low, you can anticipate would be extremely low. Even though you have at home mail-in voting, whatever, I. The costs associated, we'd have to open up downtown downstairs to have people sitting there during for the week in advance um. For a town election that annually gets what nine hundred voters as it is.
Do you have to do really voting for that?
So according to the clerk, um she said she can reduce their. Election. I'm just rereading the notes as she. I don't know if you have to do the same extent of early vote for for that. I think she could maybe refuse it to just Saturdays, but I'm not sure about. But you you're right. I mean, we would try to sort of like focus our efforts, you know, just to sort of maximize. Boss anyways.
Yeah, the the other tough the tough part about having someone come in for, you know, I mean. We can, you know, you could clearly do it, but that person, you know, you have the other thing that I'd want to know also is a lead time. So if if. It's decided we're going to have an election.
Yeah.
Well, how long? Is the process leading up to the election? Like when when will we expect a second per a a fifth person to be on?
You gotta give time. You gotta give time to get papers, just get signatures.
Exactly.
To prepare for the election, to have a campaign. By the time you do it, it's May. Especially around the Christmas season. I mean, we're coming up on uh Christmas and the holidays and then you go to. I just don't see this. It's. Doesn't make sense to me.
Any other thoughts or comments? Alright, let's let's take a look at those questions, but I I don't anticipate having this back on the agenda unless somebody specifically requested. Alright, very good. Uh so now uh without an election, we do have uh. A book of work that that we do need to fill and specifically the liaison that Armin had done. Um so what I would like to do, and I know this is extra on everybody's plate, but assign those so at least the chairs have of a point of contact if they need to get something on the agenda. Or or communicate with us. Um. And so I'll just quickly read through the openings, art space liaison, conservation commission, council on aging, cultural council. Uh fire station building committee and that one is a membership, but I know it probably um isn't long because we're getting close to completion, but I think it would be really nice to have. Somebody from the select word be there. Okay, and then parking authority is last one, so. He said Byron Council on Aging.
Council on Aging, sorry, and Fire Station. Would you need to have to get sworn in? But I can't do that.
You don't have to just do it before the next time they have a meeting. I don't know.
The human relations community is not on this list. Are there any others that aren't on here? Is there any, any of you were in that are on the list?
I I I have already updated this list, just. A correction on one, so that's the.
Name's been removed because he's not in.
Right, right, right.
Right.
Well, I can do the fire station committee with I'll call the chief and tell him I'm gonna skip one for that. And I'll I'll do the council on aging and I'll give Amy a call for that.
I think parking authority, um Megan, that's okay.
Conscription is that also?
Yes, it is.
And. The arts faceboard, which um.
Okay. Wait, no.
Could be a little awkward.
That they had that.
I I won't be attending those meetings like like Armin did because I can't be available during the day.
I think that's appropriate. Did we? That leaves, I think, just and I I can take that one.
Okay, I just wanted to know, just to make sure, because you have you have a fair amount tonight.
Yeah, and I I there has to be an expectation that we just took on an extra twenty percent um that that, you know, we won't necessarily be able to for the. I guess nine months until next. July, when we have another member who can, and even that will need to train up. So I think uh.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I will, you know, we do the best we can with with the time we have. Okay, very good. Alright, uh well, thank you all for taking on those assignments. Uh any other comments on the vacancy?
Well, other than the fact they regret the fact that Armin has left and uh. Thank him for his service to the community and I know he's going to continue to be uh an active member of the community and. Um having spoken with him, he I think he's okay.
And I had a chance to speak with him as well and you know, he has cultivated a large number of relationships and then he's been very good at being on the ground and talking with people in the. Community. And so I hope he um does continue to to contribute as as he is able at and and certainly through him. Uh connecting uh individuals to the town in appropriate places where we can find mutually beneficial projects to work on. So I. I hope we do see him and we still gain the benefit of of the, you know, very orderly communicative effort that he has put forward uh when working with various groups. Alright. Moving on to twelve, which is correspondences. Uh. I will just make a comment to to look through the pictures of Spirit Week, uh which were fantastic. Uh and then I'll add my thanks to Stephanie Duggan for for arranging that. But it looks like everybody had a fantastic time. Um any comments on the correspondences? I will accept the motion.
Move to accept the correspondence A G S.
Second.
All in favor? Very good. And thirteen is acceptance of minutes.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Very good. Uh town administrator report.
Thank you. Two seconds. Um. There is an election coming up in a couple in next week. So next Tuesday, November eighth is the election. But you can see that the clerk's office is supported. Um just to turn out that we've had so far. I appreciate all the election workers that have been there every day downstairs in the town hall. Great to see there's finally cases. So proud of that we can offer these services to that. Get people to vote. In the development of the this year twenty twenty four budget, uh the fire instructor, Lori Lori has engaged with ClearGov, which is a firm that we've used. As for transparency um. Web page on our website, uh but Lori has engaged with ClearGov to to a different module, which is budget development, operating budget development. And we have already given direction to the department that says how to engage with that website and submit their operating request for FY twenty. Pretty exciting. I don't know of other towns that come ahead to do that, but I'm looking forward to it. Kind of curious to see whether there'll be a dashboard and charts. Really facilitate. Really. Good understanding of budget. And then um. Uh town offices will be closed on November eleventh in Veterans Day. Uh the fire station is coming along, the new fire station. Uh concrete should have been poured and I believe it was Monday or yesterday, which is good, but it takes.
Uh concrete should have been poured, and I believe it was Monday, yesterday, which is good, but it takes a couple of weeks for that to settle. That's on the apron, at the driveway, um that was one of like the largest hangups in two, I can see it building. Should be, should be getting close. Count my chickens, but should be getting there, we do have a uh fire station voting committee scheduled for Thursday, outside, so we can see. Um also um. Uh Lozaro, who is the uh painting contractor that we're engaged with for this, for this pay, painting season. Will also have an additional work in front of the fire station, the new fire station construction site on Severance Street. Um it was only like twenty something thousand dollars for them to pave this portion. Uh because we, you know, we'd already done work for the utility hookups and otherwise on on Severance Street, so you take advantage of having Lozaro in town basically. And they can repave that, uh so that's, that's exciting, hopefully that happens soon, now that way it will be fully prepared. And then um. The library, I just want to help promote the the library's uh community survey, which is part of their strategic plan, so I encourage the public to go online. The little latter's website, the community survey really helped them in uh in their pursuit of providing the services. And then lastly, I want to also comment on that Spirit Week. Um and and compliment publicly Stephanie Duggan, the human resources manager, um she really knocked it out of the park, uh we had a lot of fun. And yesterday, um she and a couple of us, although she got much more dressed up than I did, uh wore costumes. Uh really fun, and every year we got a couple more employees that were costumes, um so really, really. Really proud of Stephanie and all the work that she's done, trying to go around, trying to get that. And the library and this very, our farm consolidation, great. And that's it, unless there's questions. Any questions of the town? Yeah, lots of pictures.
My favorite pin books, there you go.
Very good. Um moving on to the chair report, uh I have a few things, I had an opportunity um. To attend Kate Hogan's annual pie fundraiser, um where not only did I get to hear about the great work she does. Uh for us at the state house, but I also had a chance to uh meet Representative Clark. Who is representative for the fifth district and then our current representative Lori Trahan spoke as well, um as. You all know, we will be moving, Maynard will be moving into the fifth district, I assume when the next Congress is seated, I don't know what the exact timing is, but. Um after this election, we will be part of the fifth district, so it was, it was nice to um have the current holder of that seat here in Maynard. Uh and talked so highly about the work uh that Kate Hogan has been doing on behalf of us in the state house. And kind of connecting some of the federal uh projects that we've seen, such as uh, you know, funding for our own water infrastructure that that we are are quite thankful for. In this town, so it was a a very fantastic event, very well attended by some uh very powerful people. Uh I also had an opportunity a few weeks ago to attend one of the um Mass Municipal Association's legislative breakfast uh with Greg. Um and silver from various representatives or state representatives, uh just on some of their input and to get a legislative update. Uh from that organization and to learn more about what they do in behalf of municipalities in terms of advocating for policy. Uh at the state house, uh and then I also attended a community advisory council meeting, uh which was for Senator Eldridge. District, I believe was the area, uh and met some uh representatives from various communities around who are working on sustainability issues. Uh from uh both uh some on the municipal side and within some net zero projects for various. Uh uh building initiatives, some talking about the uh new stretch code rules that will be available for the beginning of the year, there's gonna be. An extra stretch code that I believe and communities around the state have the opportunity to opt into. Um I know some of our neighbors are are looking to be one of those ten. Uh and uh just good to meet some various uh individuals who are engaged in that very quick moving movement uh right now, so.
Moving, moving.
Yeah, it is a quick moving movement. Uh that is all for me, and we will go down the line for board member reports, Chris. Alright.
Uh I just wanted, um I was unable to make uh Representative Hogan's um. Events on Sunday, um but I do want to comment on the fact that she al- always, um obviously she does so much work for the town. And she always does bring a lot of people here, and I really do appreciate that because um she really. Helps put man it on the map sometimes, and and it's very appreciative because sometimes we're small enough that we, we need to be put on the map, so. Um and the other question actually is question for Greg squared. Um not sure which one, I I would like to attend the MMA conference, and I was wondering if someone could register me.
Yeah. What else was that? That's the January one?
Yes. Yes, I do. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else, Justine?
Um, no, not right now.
Alright, David.
Uh no, other than, I will echo the comments on Kate's um event. I think there were seventeen members of the Massachusetts Blood and Sweat here, there were two members of the United States Congress. There was the current um district attorney, there was the uh. Current leading candidate for Attorney General. And so to see the uh. The breadth and to to the point that Justine made, all these people came to Maynard because Kate chose Maynard for the event. And it just shows the respect she has for us. And um to have them all there, knowing about Maynard, where Maynard is, and having the opportunity to speak, I didn't speak to all seventeen of the. Uh legislative delegates that were there, but I spoke to probably four of them, and to have them recognize Maynard and to see where they are is. Really help.
Yeah, I think it also speaks to Kate's growing um. Her grown base in the, in the state house. Uh our base, I guess the term would be rather than powers, but her her growing role. President Pro Temp.
Well, she is second in uh command or whatever in a line of leadership. And that's the point, I mean, Catherine Clark will become our uh our US representative is second in line. She is the assistant uh Speaker of the House of Representatives, I mean, it's um it's. Theoretically could one day be uh Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Could have been this weekend.
Uh could have been, yeah.
If one left big head, it's way, but you know, they do that.
So, that is all.
Thank you, David, alright, uh our next meeting is in two weeks on November fifteenth, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you, everybody, I know.